Call this July 15th Jackson County Commissioned Work Session to Order. Roll call.
District one.
Present.
District eight.
Present.
District four. District four.
Present.
Mr. Miller is out of town this evening. We have our invocation by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Mr. Lewis.
Our God, our Father, we are blessed to be here today. We are blessed to be citizens of this county and we thank you so much for that opportunity. We're also blessed to be citizens of this United States. We pray that you will be with our country. We pray that you will be guided in the right direction or all good things will come through you. God, we pray for our citizens. We thank you for them. We pray that you continue to be with us all, watch over us and guide us. Be with these gentlemen as they consider the matters important to this county and the citizens of this county. Give them discernment, direction, and guidance and wisdom. God, we pray you'll continue to watch over us and save us. In Christ's name we do pray. Amen.
One with the leaders, to the flag of the United States of America, and to your fellow which is strange, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item is approval of the agenda. We have two items on the agenda. Are there any changes before we proceed? If there are no changes, entertain a motion to approve the agenda of those items.
We move.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Next item, public comment from citizens. Mr. Carlson.
Yeah. Stand up. Yeah. I want to address this probably to District one. I live on Highway 694. A state come into our county and dug up a perfectly good road. It was a blacktop. And just left a gravel road. And they came back in repaving it. And they stopped up there about 200 yards from my house and they said they run out of money there. And they told me when they dug up, the blacktop, they was gonna put it, paved the road all the way down 694. He said, "And it profated it, paved." But they stopped at the top of the hill about 200 yards from my house, which is on 694. And went the other way, went down 695. And I got pictures of it. I'm living on a gravel road down there. I did have a blacktop. I got pictures of it.
Was that Diddy and Road?
It's a Diddy and Road.
694 and 695?
694 and 695 are for Diddy.
I spoke with you a little bit earlier about it.
Yeah, okay.
We'll, I think that's Mr. Guffey in District. We'll have to take a look and see what the plans on it were. Like I said, I was out there last week and saw where they did do 694. And I'm not sure what the plans are for 695.
Well, somebody needs to look at, because they put a speed hump about 20 yards from the end of the road. You don't need a speed hump where you're gonna have to stop. You just have to run over something. It disgrace for a road, I mean, and it's a highway, because it'd be just like painting a car and sanding it without taking the dents out. I mean, that's what it looks like, this road.
You have something to add?
That's the road that I'm talking about.
Oh, okay. My hair day went turn up.
Hadn't got back to look at it. It caused a lot of flooding.
Contractor paved this?
Yes, yes. We have a contractor.
He paved daddy. It's, I mean, it's pitiful.
Plus, it's really more of a surface treatment than, everybody calls it paving. It's a surface treatment, just to actually keep the dust down twice.
We don't know.
And it was, the road was in pretty bad shape to start with. It's a lot better than it was. But I haven't got back and looked at paving. It caused a lot of flooding. I can't really address this question. If we did miss it, we'll watch. But we'll look at it and see.
Is that standard for us to stop before we enter the road when the contractor paves it?
No, it's, we always pave up to where we've always maintained. Unless there was some kind of miscommunication, you know, we should have paved all the way to it. Is yours the one where, I see 694 goes all the way down?
To the right.
And then 695 turns to the left?
Yeah. They went left instead of right.
694, yeah. Six, was gonna pave 694 and 695. The part to the right, I'll have to check on that.
That's the original road, 694. The right is. I mean, I just don't think they profated money for half the road and then.
No, it was intended to all of it be paved. When the county maintained, and if we, if we don't have everything the county maintained, we'll go back and we'll complete it. It's not that much.
Well.
If there's a miscommunication between us and the contractor, we'll get that corrected.
Well, I talked with them the day they did it. And I said, "Y'all correct this now." And they said, "No, you'll have to go to the commission."
Here's the contractor. He has to come to us to do that. Do you have a phone number I can reach?
Yes. 632-2513.
Your name again?
Harold Carlson. Yeah, I have a business there at the end of the road.
Okay. I'll check on that. I'll get weed before we enter the week.
Okay. Thanks, sir. We'll move on to the discussion items of the commission. And the first item is regarding the dangerous animal ordinance. A couple of things very quickly on this. First, first item on it, I would like to say that we are planning a couple of other public hearings. We're, on the 30th of this month in Dutton, we will have our district community meeting on the 30th. At the end of that meeting, we'll have a discussion on this dangerous animal ordinance for anybody that would like to attend that. So I hope that that will be attended and more information, or this same information will be available there. So if there's anybody else that's interested, that'll be available to them. And we'll set the date for one, if not two, more public hearings on this throughout the county so that folks throughout the county have the opportunity to see what it is that we're looking at and give any input to the process. And of course, the ordinance is available at the commission office at any time. We can email it, or if you want to come by, we can, you can pick up a copy of it. So the press would note that. So with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Porter to kind of outline the basics of what this dangerous animal ordinance presents, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those of you who have been interested in this for some period of time, there have been some revisions since the last commission considered the same issue. There were some particular points that the prior commission wanted in this ordinance that have been taken out, dealing with cruelty to animals and those kind of things. Those are not in here. This is solely dealing with dangerous animals. In fact, we changed the title. It was originally Animal Control Ordinance. And the name caused a lot of people concerned because they thought that the commission was trying to control their animals. So we changed the name to truly reflect what it really is, and that is a Dangerous Animal Ordinance. It deals solely with dangerous animals. If you have a copy or if you get a copy of it, you can read what a dangerous animal is. And I'm not gonna read it to you because you can read as well as I can. But for this ordinance to take effect, there has to be a report that an animal has caused basically injury or harm to a person or other animals. And then that starts the process. Right now, the sheriff's department, except under very limited circumstances, an animal control officer does not have any authority to investigate these things. So what this ordinance will do, if it's adopted by the commission, will give the sheriff's department or the animal control ordinance officer, animal control officer, the authority to investigate whether or not the animal is truly dangerous or not. If the law enforcement officer or the animal control officer determines that there is some basis for the complaint that the animal is a dangerous animal, that begins then the legal process. This ordinance, as we've got it written, is nine pages long. The great majority of it, other than the definitions, would take up several pages. Other than that, the balance of it, the majority of the provisions, is to protect the animal owner so that their animal is not taken from them or destroyed without somebody making a final determination, that is, the court, making a final determination that the animal was in fact dangerous. So that is really what this ordinance is about. In general, the process would be if you are a citizen and you have been attacked by an animal, or your dogs or other animals have been attacked by a dog, and you make that report to the sheriff's department or to the animal control officer, then they have a chance to go and talk to you and talk to the animal owner to determine what the circumstances are. Once that's done, if the law enforcement officer has determined that there's probable cause that the animal is dangerous, then it is referred to the court, for the court to make that determination. And the animal owner will have ample opportunity to come in and present their side of the case as to why the animal is not dangerous. The person either who was injured or who had an animal that was injured has a right to come in and present their side to the court to determine how the animal declared dangerous. And then it's up to the court how that is handled. If the animal is considered and found by the court to be dangerous and has caused physical injury to a human, then, or danger, substantial injury to a human, then the animal can be destroyed by the court, by order of the court. If, on the other hand, the animal is determined to be dangerous but has not caused serious physical injury to a human, then there are provisions wherein the animal owner must control the animal so that it's not loose running at large. So those are the two possible outcomes. And obviously, the court may determine that the animal's not dangerous at all, and that would be the end of it. So those are the general provisions. A lot of what's in here is, as I said, the due process provisions to make sure that your animal or you are not imposed upon unduly without due process of law. So that's what it's about. It's all about dangerous animals and doesn't have anything to do, doesn't restrict animals running at large in the county. That's not what this is about, unless they're dangerous. If they're dangerous, then there are provisions. But if you have a dog that roams at your property and your neighbor's property and doesn't cause any harm, then that does not control this. So that's what it's all about. And if you haven't gone through the ordinance, please get one so that you can read it. It's, I'd say it's fairly long, but it's not, I don't think it's hard, too hard to understand.
Thanks, sir. From the sheriff's department, do you have anything?
He covered it pretty well, but let me just say this. If three years ago, I were sitting where you're sitting, I would be sitting there going, surely this doesn't come up very often. Surely it doesn't. But let me tell you, it does. And this man can attest to that. And I'm gonna let him tell you a little bit about some of the calls he answers. Because it's, at least every day or every other day, we get a call about some nuisance, some dangerous animal. You know, we don't want to control your animals. We have no, we do not want to control your animals. But we do want to be able to protect our citizens when they call and say, "This animal is killing my cows. This animal is killing my goats. This animal is killing my chickens, my cats, my dogs, or biting my children." Right now, our answer pretty much is, "Does it have rabies shots?" Yes. There's nothing we can do about it. There's nothing we can do about it. You can sue that person, and you can hope that the courts will give you some money to take care of your losses that you have. What this ordinance does, it gives us a little bit of authority to find out if this animal's dangerous, to hold that animal if the court determines it's dangerous, to hold it and find out just how dangerous it is. And that's really all that we're asking for. Shane, you want to follow up on some of the calls you get on these things?
I had five calls last week, five different dog bites. Three of them had bit before. Two of them had bit three times before. This was the fourth bite on humans. The people carry them to the vet, they've got the rabies shot. If they've got the rabies shots, the way the law reads, you can't, I can't even take them. All I can do is tell you, you have to quarantine it on your property. In the 10th day, you gotta carry it and let the vet give it a clean bill of health. If it does not have its rabies shots, all I can do is tell you, hey, you gotta carry it to a vet and let the vet handle it. Unless, if they don't go to the hospital, emergency room, or the doctor, the health department don't usually know about it unless I call them. When I call them, she, Ms. Nancy Webb, usually gets in touch with them, and she will tell them, hey, this is what you gotta do. That's the only way that I've been able to get the authority to get a dog, is kinda her get that paper and her give me, and her tell me, hey, they're not complying, let me go get it. But like I say, they had the rabies shots, they quarantined them. One of them didn't have the rabies shots, they put it up at the vet, cost them $100. The dog had bit two people. Before this, this was the third bite, the dog's still running loose. You know, and the only way they can get anything from, you can do anything about it far as your medical bills would be, you know, go through the civil, two men civil court process. And from everybody that I've talked to that's ever had any dealings with it, they said that it's a big hassle. And I get cussed every day because I had one at Stevenson last week. Second time this dog had bit somebody. Got up there, these people talked to me like I was a dog because I couldn't take that dog. They had its rabies tag. They produced the paper and showed me that it had its shots. I had no right to take the dog. No word in the law says I can take that dog for biting. And I get calls all the time that says, "Well, the state's got an aggressive dog law." The state does not. There's nothing in Title III or Title 13 that says anything about aggressive dogs. But animals, that's the big thing that I run into. People's got chickens or, you know, livestock, dogs get after them, kill them, goats. I get a lot of calls about dogs getting in somebody's goat pen. And, you know, I grew up on a farm myself, and I'll just tell you, when I was a kid, if, and I had a bunch of people that had livestock, if my dogs got in there, they come tell me if I didn't put them up, they shot them. Nothing was ever said. But the times ain't like that no more. I get calls all the time, hey, this dog's running my goats, I'm gonna shoot it. Well, two months later, you get a call from whoever owned this dog, hey, I wanna file animal cruelty because he shot my dog. And then when you get out there, you find out that the dog was killing his goat, but he didn't want to go through the civil process, so he took it in his own hands and shot him. Next thing you know, they come in here and talk to the DA, sign a warrant on them, and I'm out there to arrest whoever shot the dog. And then it all comes back where, you know. But there's nothing, I hate telling somebody, especially somebody, I've got kids. I hate telling somebody that's got kids, like I'd tell this lady in Stevenson the other day, there's nothing, I can't get that dog after it's, you know, tore their kid up. I think that kid had to have eight, eight or 10 stitches on the leg. It was a teenage boy. He was walking down the road, and it just ran out of the bushes and got him.
You're saying that if the dog is on my property killing my cows, they can arrest me if I shoot the dog?
Yes.
He's saying it's happened.
It's happened.
That's not what I've been told.
It has happened.
Well, the way the law reads is you have the right to protect yourself and what is yours, but it don't say you've got the right to shoot that dog.
I got a question. Or if a dog was haunted on some property, and it killed somebody's cat that wandered under the property, what happened?
Well, that would be probably one of them deals.
If we could, we'll, we'll address the questions here, and I think Mr. Porter can probably address how this may affect that.
Okay.
Were there any other things you wanted to add before we?
I don't, not really. All I can tell you is, I'm, the main thing, and I've told all of them, I've told everybody, the main thing I started this for, when I started pushing for, I've got elderly parents that's got bad knees. If a, if a dog gets on me, I can get it off of me. If a dog gets on them, and if it was knocking my dad down, he's done it. I've got young kids. They ain't gonna get a dog off of me. I would just like to have something saying that I have the authority, if that dog attacks you, and it's attacked somebody before, I can go get it and hold it at the shelter until a judge. But I don't want to make that call. But I want to be able to pick it up and hold it till somebody else can make that call. And that's all I was shooting for when I started this.
Thank you, Shane. What I'd like to do, commissioners, if they have anything real quick, and then we'll go through this list. And after we go through this list of individuals that have signed to speak, if there are any quick questions after that, we'd be glad to kind of go through that. Let's go through these, these points that have been made here before we get into questions. Before we begin with that, Mr. Guffey, have you anything before we proceed?
Folks, we're shaking in here. You know, this is not a doing that we're gonna have several meetings, and I've been approached by several people, won't do something. I was elected to serve as citizens of Jackson County, and that's what I'm trying to do. I won't end. But any questions you have, you know, we'll see what this ordinance says about your question. And that's what I want, I want to do. I appreciate it by coming.
Mr. Lewis? We will proceed then with the names on the list here. And I'll try my best. We've got, is it Jack Allison?
Yes.
Okay. And you can either stand in place or come forward, however you wish to do it.
I'll go along with you vicious dog thing, but I'm toon hunter. I've ridden this thing about five different times. There's no provisions in there for toon hunters, rabbit hunters, bird dogs. You've gotta put me a provision in there. I'm not gonna quit toon hunting. I might start shooting somebody when they start after my dogs, but I ain't threatening nobody to come after.
And I think.
But you've gotta have, you've gotta have some kind of provision. I cannot toon hunt with a dog on a four-foot leash.
Pretty hard to do.
It's an impossibility. I can't go upside the mountain fast like you.
They're not vicious though, they're not dangerous.
Not unless somebody hits them.
I mean, this provision's only for dogs that's dangerous that, you know, bite somebody.
But, but, let me give you a but. Get one lung to dig, it soothes the system because you took their vicious dog and didn't take my gentle hump. Childish.
Then that can happen now. You've mentioned that, you've mentioned that before, and on Section 3, I think it does mention leash. That wording can be changed to say that the owner needs to have control over their animal so that, for that instance, you don't have that word. But I think we can change that.
That'll help out a lot, but don't take too much of the dog away from it.
And that is, the provision Mr. Hodges was referring to in Section 3, where it now says leash, is saying that if we count for the toon hunters and the duck hunters.
Rabbit hunters, they take control of their dog.
Can you count hundred, as long as they're controlling their dog?
All right, Mr. Steve Fisher?
My name is Steve Fisher. I am 70 years of age and a Jackson County resident. For the record, I'm a dog lover and have owned dogs my entire life. As a result of that lifelong experience, trust me, I know the difference between a barking dog, that's simply being territorial, and a dangerous dog or dogs in actual attack modes. Unfortunately, there are far too many unrestrained and dangerous dogs in Jackson County, and many of these animals roam public roadways and public hunting areas in packs of three to five or more. Over the years, I have encountered extremely vicious and aggressive dogs on numerous occasions while riding my bicycle on county roads and while scouting or hunting on public wildlife management areas. On one such occasion, I was attacked by three very aggressive dogs, each of whom weighed at least 75 pounds or more. I sustained an injury to my left ankle that will cause me problems for the rest of my life. I would hate to think what would have happened that day if the victim of that attack had been a child instead of a full grown man. I realize that the animal control ordinance that's been currently considers, considered does not mandate that all dogs in the county be restrained or kept on their owner's property. It does, however, require the control and restraint of any and all vicious, dangerous, or overly aggressive dogs, and will provide a means for folks like me who have problems with these kinds of animals. They'll be able to report their experiences in a manner that will require follow-up by the appropriate county official or law enforcement officers.
What I want to know about is, it says over here that these tags for the collars should be on there all the time, but all officers can see them and read them clearly, visible, and shall be presumed that the animal has not been vaccinated. A rabbit dog, how long does that tag, does it stay on his collar in the woods, brow or stuff like that?
What is the, apparently.
That's, that's the state law that it's supposed to be doing. I've talked to the sheriff when I first took this because I've got one of the canine tracking dogs. I put his rabies tag on him. First time I took him on the track, it's gone. I do not enforce that. The only thing that I do, if I get a call to a house, when I get there, that's the first thing I ask for is, you know, no matter what call it, if it's a dog, I ask if it's current on the rabies tag, and I ask to see it. As long as they produce the paperwork showing that it's current, then they're good.
Paperwork, man, call back.
Right. Well, that's good.
My rabbit dog.
That, yeah.
And they stay on about 15 minutes when you put them on.
Right.
Give them a row or a few.
That's exactly why I don't, that's exactly why I don't enforce the tag thing, because a dog running loose, there's no way, you know, if it's got a collar and it's running out loose in the woods, it's going, that little flimsy tag's not gonna stay on there. So as long as, you know, if I get a call to your house and I come to your house and I say, "Hey, has your dog's got rabies? You produce me the rabies paper, I'm good with it." You know, nothing else to say.
That's what this refers to. It'll allow him to ask for that. Amy Beatty?
I first have a question. Again, what Mr. Porter was reading earlier. He said that if, you know, if the dog hasn't had a human, that, you know, y'all pretty rude that they put down, or if it was a dog and they had attacked animals over and over again for fifty or thirty years, y'all said that all that can do is make sure they put them up and don't them out. Well, I'm being brought to court right now when my dog got attacked and killed by these two dogs that have had history for thirty years of killing animals on our street. And I'm gonna be in court right now because of it. And I don't feel like, you know, like they said, they're keeping the dogs up, they recently got out again. They're at six court. I'm being brought to jury court right now. And I don't feel like that just make sure they keep them put up is enough when they have attacked as many times and killed as many animals as they've got now.
What's the provision right now, or under this, if it passes for attack on animals?
The provision presently is that if it is an attack upon an animal, not a human, because it's serious physical injury, it is required to be kept up. That's all.
That's what I'm, that's my question. Why, why would they not be put down if they have attacked? We have a lot of kids on our street, and it may not be an animal. And if they have attacked as many times as this, I mean, why can they not be put down? Does it include one of our kids in it?
This also says, the provision says it's upon the discretion of the animal control director. So they didn't make that determination.
They make that determination initially, when the, when the animal is impounded. But the ultimate decision is up to the court.
Is there a fine in place if it does attack animals or does something? So there is a fine in place? Okay, Horace Plamen?
I commend you guys for pushing forward this and the way you're doing it with public hearings. We've tried on the previous commission. And we've tried on the previous commissions. I, I think that most of us understand that in this county, my dog goes where my dog wants to go. And if my dog ever bit anybody, I would be more than glad to put it up. But, but I, I'm glad that you didn't change the culture of the county, that you understand the whole environment, still allow people to have their dogs run along the street. But I do believe you guys are doing the right thing by trying to find a way to, to keep the vicious animals out the way. I believe the hunters have to be protected, and I believe, I commend you for what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Bruce Reinhardt?
I don't have anything to say right now. I'm gonna read this a little more for you, I just got it.
Okay. Uh, Mark Dutton, please.
Mr. Hodges, believe it or not, my name's Mark Dutton, and I am actually the mayor of Dutton. I've talked with Rocky, several commissioners, back years ago, and I know we're not debating the dog ordinance, but when that came up, we were told, since we were a municipality, that it wouldn't affect us. I think most of the folks around Dutton that I've talked to, since we rely on the Sheriff's Department for our law enforcement, we would like to make sure that we're, that it's worded where, that we're, you know, there's Pleasant Grove, Langston, Dutton, and another couple of little municipalities that are incorporated, but we don't have our own police department. And I know, you know, that we are rural, and we're not shooting rockets here, we're just trying to raise dogs and families. But we do need some protection. I just wanted to be sure that it's all considered, just to the extent that our little community would be protected under the ordinance. Thank you.
If it would be possible for any municipality to adopt this, the law would have been correct. Judge Stewart?
But all I can say is, if the system is broke, fix it. But it ain't broke. We don't need this dog ordinance. This is nothing more than the sheriff wanting to put on a couple more debits to enforce this ordinance so that he can get and collect more money. And just think about the process you're gonna have to go through to get this dog, one way or the other, get it good, or kill. I have some neighbors that had dogs, and they'd run out on the road every time my, my wife would walk down the road. Well, I told her, I said, "Get yourself a gun and kill them." We had the more problem then, that ended the problem. Get yourself a gun and kill them. And if you can't take care of your own problems, you, you don't need to be in this county.
Thank you, sir. Ellen O'Connor?
I am his wife. Uh, and yes, we did have a problem down the road. It wasn't, Mr. McAllister was not on that duty at the time, it was another gentleman. And I did call him, and he said to me, "Do they lung at you? Have they bitten you?" I said, "No." But they, there were three of them, and they all lived at the same house, okay? And they were all different sizes, and the one was the leader, and they came that close to biting me. I used to throw rocks at them till I could get away from them. When I talked to the officer about this, he told me the same thing that you've said. He couldn't do anything about it unless the dog bit me. And I asked him what he was gonna do if the dog bit me, and he said, "Oh, I'll talk to the people who own the dog." Needless to say, nothing happened. Luckily, the people moved. We didn't have to shoot the dogs. But I did start carrying my pistol. I do have a pistol permit to carry. And I told that officer that. And he said, "Don't shoot them out in the middle of the road. Make sure that they stay on their property. And if you shoot them on their property, make sure you have a witness that they were coming at you." End of my discussion.
David, agree?
Uh, the question I have is, what about a mule's dog? Is there any wording in that? I have a red one.
Or barking, and things like that?
Well, killing cows, or, they're not necessarily vicious dogs. I've had, uh, two, three dogs get killed and come in fast and kill a baby cat. You know, they played with it, but the cat's dead. It's not necessarily vicious dog. My concern is, we're looking too much for the owner. I need some protection if I have to kill that dog. Now, I don't want to kill anybody's dog, but I'd numerously go out with a rifle and try to shoot around him. And most times, scare him off. But I'm, the sheriff's not gonna get there in time to save the baby cat. So I'm, I've got, I need some protection as a, as a cattle producer for mule's dog, not, not the vicious dog.
The goal, and the goal, I would think, uh, at least my, from what I would see, uh, would not be to, uh, allow people to shoot the dog. That's, I think, outside of what we can authorize. But if it does occur to have some type of repercussion, and that's what we need to, to ensure, or see if that's something to be included, um, if it attacks cattle, it may attack once, but if that dog gets away, then we'll go through this process to, uh, protect you for many further instances of attacking with that animal. That, that's my personal thoughts on it.
Can we even legally do anything, uh, to help this gentleman out? I mean, that, that our powers, I mean.
I don't think that the county has the authority to give you a mule. Uh, it's a state issue, because it's a state statute regarding the killing boundary. Uh, so that would have to come through a state or a local act. To put it as a book from the state, I don't think the county has the authority.
So, so you're saying there is no state law giving me authority to protect my cows, isn't it?
I'm not saying that.
Well, let me give you a-
I'm not telling you about shooting dogs.
Let me give you a message. We're gonna be court over it, the dog. We had, we had a dog, a, a large malamute that went to a neighbor's house, and they had sheep or goats or something. And he's played with it. He didn't kill any of them, but he was a large dog. And they were in the house looking out, and he's wagging his tail, and they killed it. We filed a charge against him for cruelty of animal. The judge threw it out. So there's, there's some state law, some jurisdiction.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is, if the county, that's really outside of the county. If the county's authorities do anything, it's limited, um, dangerous animals is one issue that the county can address by passing an ordinance. Those are limited issues, and this is one of them that it can't, so.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is maybe put something in about mule's dog rather than this vicious dog.
Well, that, it-
And it may be there, I, I have red, I have red. Thank you.
There, there is. It does address dogs that attack-
Cows.
Or, or goats, or sheep, or anything like that. That, that is addressed injuries. And it would be a danger, if it's found to be dangerous, it would be one of those dogs that cannot be put down because of it, but would be required to be put up.
Just a couple other questions. Talking about animals, right? What if I get, if my bull gets out, and goes under the road, and he looks, he looks pretty vicious, some person?
If he attacks him, you're gonna-
Now, that, that's gonna be covered by state law as livestock running at large. Or that's something like, uh, see, the state law, Title III, has got, that would be, uh, you know, livestock running at large. So, you know, that's covered. If, if he gets out, and I get a call, and I'm not gonna come out and take your bull. I'm gonna hunt you down, say, "I eat bulls out." And I, I've come out at eleven o'clock at night and helped a man put his bull up. And he was running a patrol car, playing with him. He was a big player, no joke. We, it walked right behind me, and I hit it the whole time I was walking it back from the pen. That actually happened about two, three months ago. But I'm not gonna take your bull if your bull gets out.
Uh, Mr. Wall?
I might, may have figured, but, uh, so, uh, a fish in the land, nuisance.
Go ahead, we'd like to share.
My name's Donnie Wall. My home name is Jackson County. And I bought the land for recreation. I bought it to hunt primarily deer and turkey. And I've not been able to hunt this land without dogs, just from home and country. I'm sitting in my tree stand, and getting dogs on my camera at night. And they're running deer, oh, I'm sitting in my stand. And I've tried to go to game order about it, to find out if there's something I can do to help, and there's nothing. I went to the Sheriff's Department, there's nothing I can do about it. And I've gone to the owners, and the owners have no intention of putting them up. And I'm looking for some kind of nuisance. I mean, I spent a lot of money on this on property, and I'm, I live at home. And I understand that all the guys I own, this young man right here, I, I reckon, I bet, if he keeps his dogs in town. Good. A neighbor that is not gonna keep his dog up, I, I'm not gonna sell my land and go home. And this land is, all I do with this home is-
This, this would not-
I got into an incident where a dog got shot by accident. I got arrested for it. It's not fair to me, because when a deer is coming into me, and that deer starts running, I don't have a clue. When that gun goes off, I mean, you can't take that shot back. Two months later, I got arrested. I had already gone to the Sheriff's Department the day after it happened, and I asked them what I needed to do. They said, "Donnie, probably what you need to do is just offer pay for the dog." I did that. I still got arrested by the state. That's not fair to me, as a, as a guy that loves to hunt, loves to spoil a dog. All I do with it is, is turkey hunting.
And just to be clear, Mr. Wall, we didn't pursue those charges. The person who owned the dog pursued the charges.
I know that, I know that.
Yeah, well, I know you know that.
But, you know, I was, you know, I went to the lawyer, and I was with you guys, and, and I was telling probably just pay for the dog. And I made that comment out, I was gonna pay for that dog, because the dog was not shot in either. I never saw the dog. So I got down in my stand here, because I heard a yell. Again, I can't take that shot back. And I felt so bad about it, my wife continued, I was asleep or asleep. It's not fair to me, to have to do people out of here. I would love to see some kind of nuisance. If I get this dog, or this dog on any camera, I've got these dogs on this camera where I put in my tree stand, and they're running deer, or running up under my tree stand. There needs to be something. If I go to the, to the dog, why can't they put a look? At least you can't see them. Keep them on their property. So that, that, I guess that's my check. I, I just love to see something there that is perpetually, and I've gone to them, and they just keep leading them out running. What am I, how am I gonna, how am I gonna hunt? If there's hunters in here, I know that deer's not gonna stay with a dog, but, they're gonna run up on my animal. And it, my home has been about thirty years, and, and it's, it's a common situation.
Thanks, sir. Any comments from the commission in regard to any of that stuff?
What is our, you know, threat to install something that's running on property like that? Do we have a provision that we can look at? Or something to hear about, harassing, gang?
There, there is a state statute that requires, would require owners to keep their animals on their own property. But it's not enforced yet.
We could, we could look at the harassing there and see if that's something feasible, if that's a good idea. Any other comments on any of those things? We'll, like I said, we'll open it up for a few questions, if we would, make your questions quick. Um, we'll go through a few now, and then, uh, if, if, after a few minutes, we'll close it to questions. If you have any more afterwards, uh, please feel free to come up and ask us any questions you have about it. But we'll go ahead and take a few questions now, if you would like to make this, or-
I don't, I didn't get to sign up, but last time this came about, I didn't agree with it. But this time, it's a little more, I understand. I do have one question. What is consistently chasing, one of, uh, I've got two cows too, and they like to run around. And occasionally, I'll chase, chase cars. Is that considered constantly chasing?
Which portion are you at, or where is that?
Uh, page two, third paragraph, there's an animal description, other definition of it. Says, "Or consistently chases."
I think we, yeah, I can't give you a better, uh, definition of consistently, other than what it says, it's something that's consistent, not, uh, occasional, but consistently. But just, she's calling, Miss O'Connor, walked down the street and then consistently chased her. Um, I think that would definitely be a animal that consistently chases something. It says also without reason or provocation. If there's a reason or provocation, then it's not. What consistently means, I think, is exactly what it says, all the-
We'd like to allow those to chase an animal, but it doesn't prove-
Should that say consistently chases, it refers to, uh, probably, you know, whatever.
I think, uh, to be, there's a lot of wording in there that states, you know, aggressive behavior, uh, snapping at people, hissing, smirking, noticing. And if it needs to be specified within that, those commas under consistently chasing, it may need to do that. And I think that's the, the purpose, is if they're, they're showing that aggression.
Yeah, but I understand that part towards people, or probably towards a car or something going down the street, that's one.
I, I don't think that-
I understand if it's chasing somebody, a bison or a bear or somebody trying to walk on the road.
Two sentences down, though, it does say, "At human beings."
Right. I just make sure that's what I'm understanding.
Another question, yes, sir?
Yeah, well, the question about what if the dog's at home and a cat comes on property? You take three dogs, pretty much anything that runs is chasing, you know, a quarter of reds. And, and a cat don't stand a chance, it's in a hundred yards from you.
If the dog is on your own property, Mr. Porter, how does this affect that?
There's an exception for dogs on your, or animals on your own property if someone is trespassing on your property. That's the only exception that's currently in this ordinance. The question is whether or not, if, if your dog killed somebody else's cat that's on your property, that's not really very well covered here.
That's something I think. We understand that on his own property, can you, you know, a dog being on the dog's property, you're free.
But we'll keep it as a discussion item. So we'll, we'll be sure to put that as a discussion item when we're looking at any further changes for animal trespassing on your land. Like you said, an individual that trespasses, obviously, you are covered, but for animals, it's not stated. So we'll see what can be warranted to include out of this. Any other questions? Yes.
First of all, I want to say I appreciate Joe Irving to try to help our, um, county. We have a problem in our neighborhood. We're all here to help represent and support you, and your thing, is there something that will control? We have a person in our neighborhood that has, like, fifty dogs and upwards, almost all the time. And at times, they have been bad and have cannibalized each other and everything. The Animal Control people have come up and picked up a hundred and sixty dogs at a time, and more. And at times, they run in packs, and they came after me one day, and I was just within this far of getting in my collar from being attacked by at least ten dogs, probably this high and then lower. And, um, is there something in there that will help prevent that?
That would protect her, if they show aggression towards the-
Generally, the answer is yes. This would address that issue, whether or not the specific instance you're talking about will be covered, I can't say. But generally, it would protect you from the dogs that are consistently chase you, uh, snap, brow, uh, those kind of things.
Okay, they chase all the other neighbors if they try to run down the street too.
Right.
And, uh, but they all look so much alike, and there's so many. Whenever anybody comes out with- Whenever anybody comes out, it's hard to identify them. But, um, but you'll just help with that situation.
Other questions? Okay. Um, what, what I'd like to do, we've got a number of things, good, good ideas that have been brought up this evening, good points that have been brought up, so we'll take those, uh, look at any revisions we might make to this and, of course, make that available. Anyone that's not on our list, we do have a list of individuals, uh, email or phone list. If you'd like a copy of the, an email, once any changes are made, we'd be glad to email it to you. Um, or if you'd like a call when the next available, or the next time we do, uh, a public hearing is, if you'll come up and put your name on this sheet, we'll be glad to call you for that next, uh, hearing. So, we'll take these items and, and, and review that, see what changes need to be made. We will have another hearing, like I said, on the thirtieth at the Dutton Town Hall after we do our, uh, community meeting. And then we'll set the date for another, uh, one or two hearings, uh, as the commission wishes after that. So, is anything else from the commission regarding Mr. Porter?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. Uh, I just hope everybody takes the time to read. And if you do have some ideas, you know, get with us. Uh, we're not trying, you know, I'm staunch about, you know, I'm conservative. I want us to keep things the way they are, like having, you know, my rights and, and I know you do too. Uh, and we're not trying to take anybody's rights away. All we wanna do is help the people who's getting bit, you know, and it's a dangerous animal. You know, we're hearing so many rumors go around that we're trying to adopt orders, but it's a dangerous animal for them, that's all. And I just hope that, that everybody on top of your friends and family know that that's all this is, is for a, a dangerous animal. But we just want to make sure that's clear for you now and the next few months.
And encourage your neighbors to attend this. Um, this is the way that we hear the input and can have your opinion put in here to protect everybody. We do encourage you to show up and participate in this.
Anything else from the commission report, sir?
Let me just say that, that as the drafter of this document, uh, I would much rather know your concerns upfront so they can address the court's adopted, so they don't have to amend it. So, any input that you've got, that you can give the commission will help them, help me to, uh, answer all the questions, because we have had some unique questions tonight. Uh, we'll, we should be able to take that and modify this to the extent allowed by law to do that.
You've got some concerns, who do we send to our commission or to you or to who?
Uh, you can send them to commission@jcch.net or you can give a call.
Great.
And as noted, we have a few more copies here if anyone would like one tonight, uh, or if you'd like to put your name down. Like I said, we'll be glad to email you any changes that we make to it. We'll get that when we finish. That concludes the first item on our agenda. Move on to the second one, the airback lifetime. This was presented last, uh, last week or last work session for employees of the county participating in this. The county's done it in the past, or utilized, we've not utilized in the past, uh, that I'm aware of, but we'll reconsider whether we want to report this. Are there any comments or questions on this at this time?
Good. We talked about this last week. This is just for employees wanting to play in each other.
Any other questions or comments, sir? Uh, if there's no objection, then we'll place this on the agenda for next Monday night. That concludes the items on our agenda, so we'll move on to our reports. Mr. Wider?
Yes, there are a couple of things. As y'all are aware, we had a block with a flooding last week, so we told Ransfield on the third day and just kind of break y'all today. We're out on that. Several roads, uh, washed out, uh, most of them Mr. Duffy's district, up around the Brian area, um, on top of the mountain, we had a one or two down off of ninety-one. Uh, right now, we have, uh, uh, roads that remain closed, this county road two nine up the Brian. We had to order some special pipes out of those laws that are supposed to be here. One load was supposed to be here tomorrow and the next load's supposed to be here, uh, the following day. So, hopefully, uh, we will be able to get that ready and back up sometime at the latter part of this week, the first and next week, uh, depending on, uh, more likely, let me just go ahead and say it's probably gonna be next week. We've got a lot of ripper out and stuff, we gotta put in after the pipe gets done, so, uh, it's not a huge issue right now, so, uh, it shouldn't, I know it's inconvenience to the community, but, uh, we're just to ask that they be patient with us, uh, till we get that completed. Uh, another road that, uh, in that same area is kind of a negative degree, which goes off the mountain. Uh, I think Mr. Hodges and I wrote down that road, uh, last week on Thursday. Uh, several areas it's washed off. We have got the road passable at this time and, uh, we're still working on it. We're having to close it up during the day so we can work on it. We're having to take a great deal of equipment and there's no way to get around that equipment while they're working, uh, if somebody's up and down the mountain. So, we are, uh, closing that road during the day while we're working, uh, you know, with the equipment. So, it's gonna be open some and closed some. We're gonna keep it open all we can, but our intent is to open it up every evening, uh, when we leave and, uh, get done and, uh, re-close it then at the start of the day when we go back. Hopefully, that won't last, don't pass this week. Uh, maybe we'll have that, uh, maybe have that ready. Uh, several more roads, uh, we have road, the big one is, uh, and we're just, I was telling Mr. Hodges, Mr. Duffy, we just, uh, found out about this, uh, a few hours ago, it's County Road two eighty-one up at Bridge Point. Uh, this is a, uh, a huge washout. It's like, uh, it's like sixty foot deep, two holes on both sides. What happened, the water, uh, water was rushing so hard against the upstream side, it washed out the toe of the slope. Uh, the upper part just fell over the pipes and completely closed and thus created a dam. Had a big, uh, lake up there as well, started going over the road, washed it out the other side also. So, uh, that road is gone and impassable. Uh, we're gonna, uh, we're in the process of putting concrete barricades up. Uh, I, I hate to tell you that, or when we'll be able to get that fixed, it's gonna take a lot of work to get to that point of getting that road fixed. It's not a huge detour. It's the, uh, y'all probably familiar with it, it's the little loop road that goes around , uh, close to the dollar general store. So, uh, that's probably gonna be the one, it's gonna be a while on down the road before we're able to get it opened back up. We, first thing we gotta do is dig down, see if our pipes are installed, see if we got the pipes. And, uh, then we're gonna have to find an area to, uh, get borrow material to haul in, so, uh, quite a lot of work going on with that. There was a, a little bit of damage over in, uh, Mr. Level's district, uh, not, not much, the majority of it was up there. I think, uh, I think had a lot of damage on State Road sixty-five, which, uh, we helped with that, uh, some, what we could. Uh, but, uh, just to kind of let y'all know, and maybe the newspaper will put in there, uh, put in newspapers, especially about County Road, uh, uh, two eighty-one and ninety-three, we'd appreciate if you would, so everybody will kind of know, uh, that, like I said, two eighty-one's gonna be a, a while before we do. Y'all got any questions or?
I, I've got one. Where do we stand when we have these washouts that completely destroy the roads as far as insurance was? Oh, will we cover anyway whatsoever for a complete washout to go back and fix these roads?
The only, uh, the only recourse that we have is when we have enough, uh, washout, Mr. Porter and I will address this, but if we have enough damage that we get declared a disaster area, then we'll be able for FEMA funds and, uh, disaster funds. But otherwise, there's not a whole lot of recourse for the county except to fix it, you know, it's usually at our cost.
Any other questions or comments? I'd just like to say, we went out last Thursday, I think it was, and, uh, obviously a lot of damage, especially up on the north side and outside, but I appreciate what the public works has done, uh, all the work that they've done and the sheriff's department too for helping out and, you know, all the, they give back the public work for everything that you're doing. I know it's a, it, it's obviously a lot of work that's going on out there. Uh, and when something like this happens, we kind of have to stop all the other things we're doing and focus on this, uh, initially. So, I appreciate you guys and what they do. And if you would, please pass that along, we'd be glad to.
We have a lot of men working late and, you know, we have to, uh, but, uh, everybody's always willing to, uh, of course, we've got a good group. Uh, what I'd like, uh, what I was hoping to share with Secretary there about, we've been, uh, I know we're trying to save both of these places, if we did, some of y'all have, uh, kind of, y'all being new, we're gonna be generating some reports from y'all to go along with this, let me discuss, uh, actual cost, what this cost, you know, just like the one road with, uh, two ninety-one, it was surprising what money has to go in for just that one washout, you know, it looks, it don't look like much, but it'll be thousands and thousands of dollars of county money that has to be used to, to fix that.
We need to start looking at an emergency fund and, uh, shake a few budgets and put some funds back for this if we're not gonna recover, um, some way or another. Because I, I did not realize that a washout or natural disaster, if we're not declared a disaster, then we could get no funds whatsoever to fix this stuff.
Yeah. Uh, we, uh, sometimes we'll, uh, you know, like if, uh, sometimes cars hit guardrails and stuff, we get covered, the insurance that away, but nothing, you know, of this magnitude, we're covered for, that's what we get declared.
Hopefully, we can do a budget, a lot item for emergencies and fund that, uh, in the future.
One problem we had, uh, while all this is going on, it's true, Brian's one of the worst areas in Paint Rock Valley. It's, uh, been able to get communicate with each other, you know, there's no cell phone service, uh, we're having radio problems, uh, and stuff like that. But we're trying to work on that and create it. We're working with Rocky and them to, uh, to get, uh, better for where everybody's got hand held radios and stuff like that. Not everybody, but the foreman's and supervisor and all, but, uh, the communication part of it caused this problem last week, basically, we, you know, just, uh, not like you think up on the mountain, you had good service, but it was, it was hard to communicate. But, uh, we're gonna work on that some. I think Sheriff's Office is working on getting their base station, does that come along with you and all?
It's doing.
We're working on getting our, uh, frequency into their, their radio, so that would help a lot. Uh, the only other thing I had, uh, wanted to, I know, uh, y'all and, uh, we've, we've been working with the commission, I asked, uh, with, uh, Fish and Wildlife about getting a, a grant, uh, replace a bridge up on National Fork up at, uh, on County Road now. And, uh, we're, uh, working on that. We opened bids for that trust bridge today, uh, that would be constructed in Ohio and delivered to, uh, Jackson County for installation by county forces. If we get to the point that we get all this agreement and all worked out with Fish and Wildlife and, uh, is it TDC they go by, TNC?
TNC.
TNC, sure. If we get all those details worked out and, uh, are able to, uh, jointly, uh, take care of this project with them, then the bridge has been bid and ready that we can, as soon as the commission approves, we'll be, you know, agreed, go follow through that. Uh, I've been sending back, uh, I was telling Mr. Level, well, we've been getting numerous emails, I've been eating by them back and forth with Fish and Wildlife and working on contracts, getting all the language and everything, kind of, before we all can agree on it. And, uh, there's an email that was sent this morning, Mr. Porter, I think a copy of you. And if I come over the weekend, uh, that, that's kind of getting to be maybe file form and getting before we really do look at that. And I'd like to ask the commission if it was, to have, uh, Mr. Porter to look at that and see if we need to, any changes on our part of it. Basically, from section five on, Mr. Porter, the, the legality's a lot of stuff that we wasn't, uh, really, we needed you to look at. Everything leading up to that's basically the engineering part of it and, uh, what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it, what it's gonna cost. So, uh, if we can get that, then I'm sure that Fish and Wildlife will be, you know, I've been in touch with them, probably want to have another meeting pretty soon if we could.
Thank you.
That's all. Is scheduling, of course, I don't have to do anything on that grid yet.
No, we're still waiting. So, we gotta get that agreement done, you know, that, that one part of that fund, uh, the forty-seven thousand dollars is a hundred and fifty, you know, we gotta use that as part of that on the, the driven. So, until we get this contract signed and agreed to, we cannot do anything with that. I have been in contact with the, uh, the geotek firm that's gonna do that for us, so they originally gave us a price of about, I think, ninety-eight hundred dollars. I contacted them and, uh, we, I told them, you know, basically what we need, we basically just need board logs like we discussed and we've been able to reduce that cost down to about five thousand. So, uh, that's gonna be, uh, plenty less than what we were originally anticipating.
Can we make sure that people in that area, uh, plenty of hours, will notice? Because that's a long way from where that grid is at, to come back around. Kind of make, let's, let's make sure that they get plenty of time.
Yeah, I, I, and I think we talked about this in our meeting, I, I wish we could have a, maybe a, uh, one, one evening or something where if anybody had.
That would be great.
Uh, you know, maybe at a church or community center or something that's around, I think would be a good idea for everybody to know. Uh, I, I wish, and sometimes, uh, my daddy just had it, don't get everything wished for, but I wish we could do it this summer while school's out. But as y'all know, this thing's, uh, the permits and everything and everything going on, uh, it's possible, we're probably gonna be starting it until, on towards, you know, maybe another couple of months even. Uh, the deadline of the contract that they've got to, uh, that they've related to, that they've gotta have their money spent by is December thirty-first of this year. And, uh, so, we're gonna be doing this during the school year. And I, I'm not, I'm not familiar with, as far as school buses, uh, if there's kids on both sides of one, but maybe that's something we can find out in the meeting too, it'll be, uh, that and, uh, that's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Porter?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Level?
Yes, sir.
The only thing I mentioned, you have, uh, in your package, the, a copy of the amended minutes for April twenty-third, it does include the resolution in this one, so if you're reading that, I'd like to vote on that next week, uh, fourth of July eighth, many of those are in there as well. And thanks, everybody, for coming out. Uh, we'll keep moving forward with this, uh, vicious animal ordinance and figure what can be done, what needs to be done. It's time to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I need a motion.
Motion. We have a second. All those who favor say aye. And then the vote.